More familiar with because that's how they're surviving.
Yeah.
And.
Jim, I don't want to interrupt what's important.
Good for you.
No, go ahead. It's your meeting.
Since seven thirty, I'd like to welcome everyone to the September mid-month meeting and Kyle, I think we're going to put this off. So.
Sure. So good morning. Welcome to September fourteenth. My commission mid-month meeting. I am Kyle Kobe. I will be helping facilitate some video portion of the meeting. Joining us is Jeff Crick, planning development services director. We will have some special guests as well. I'll let them introduce themselves and they're about to go. We will be working alongside the right here to help facilitate the meeting. This meeting will be uploaded to the city's YouTube channel. Please remember to mute yourself during the meeting when you're not speaking. The chat function for the meeting will be disabled. All chats will go directly to me. And unless you're participating during the meeting, please turn your video off. This left the active name just wants to be on the screen. Just to be able to hear the meeting when you are participating, please turn your video on. If you have any trouble, you can send me a chat. The city reserves the right to mute or turn individual videos off to minimize distractions during the meeting. And that is all the script applies. So I'll turn it back over to you.
Kyle, thanks a million. Our September mid-month meeting is largely designed for discussion and diving deep into different topics, largely about education, about matters that might be specific. We won't cover anything in informal business. I'm going to talk about any items that are open items for the city or the county. I'm so asking that in mind. We don't have formal public comments set up, but if there is someone from the public that is here that at the end of each topic has something to contribute, we'll offer three minutes for them to ask, but it won't be a part of the discussion that we have. And with that, unless there's any questions, we have two topics today, one around bikes and one around safe routes to schools. And I think Paul, you're going to kick us off with a conversation on bikes.
Great. Thank you. So first quick introduction. My name is Paul Hornbeck. Here with Jessica and we're with Lawrence Douglas County Metropolitan Planning Organization. We do long range transportation planning for all of Douglas County. So that is Lawrence unincorporated Douglas County as well as Udora, Baldwin City, LaCompton. I've been here only since March, so I'm still learning and was not here during these. We created these plans. Jessica was, if you can take all the credit or blame for for the plans and you could probably answer more in-depth questions that you may have. But I will give you an overview. So we have two plans, the Lawrence bikes plan as well as the countywide bike plan. And.
Yeah.
Well, that's night. If you want to be the mouse, I can run through it. Yeah. So we have the two plans. Lawrence bikes was adopted in 2019. The countywide bike plan was adopted in 2021. And the reason for updating the plans, we're on kind of a five-year rotation of all our plans. So the bike plans, pedestrian plan, safer routes to school, the other plans.
Thank you.
Okay. Can we try and update those every five years? Some of the key components of the bike plan, bike plans is creating a low-stress network that's works for all ages and abilities. And this update was also focused on on implementing that as well as bringing in some of the national design standards to help help create that network that's a low stress, high comfort for all ages and abilities. So community engagement is a big part of our process. We have a public engagement plan that we follow for all of our processes. And so developing these plans, we we follow the the process that's outlined in our public engagement plan. So these plans have a steering committee that helps guide the process and help us vet our ideas and give us some direction. We have a robust engagement process with each community. So Lawrence Douglas County, the small cities. There's a public comment period, a thirty-day public comment period. Once the plan is developed and we have it posted and available for review. So engagement consisted of open houses, guided bicycle rides, mobile meetings, as well as a survey. The survey had over six hundred responses. And I mentioned, we have the two separate plans. They started as one kind of combined bike plan for Lawrence and the county. They were split during the process to get better engagement with the with the small cities. We found that doing the safer house to school with the bike plan gets gets the kids engaged and then parents engaged. So that was a big part of the countywide plan.
Paul Charlie Thomas. So I am new to this. So you're saying you're meeting with the cities Baldwin, Udora, LaCompton. What about just the unincorporated areas? Where 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 does the input come there? How do you meet with with those people?
Steering committee for the countywide bike plans was the MPO Bicycle Advisory Committee. And it has representation of two, I believe, two appointed positions that are appointed by Douglas County. And so the that they serve as the liaisons for what would we would consider this county, whether they totally incorporate it or not, would be their prerogative in that. When we do engagement, of course, we're doing it to try to hover, you know, to target everyone in the sense that we use all popular news media or other things there. I don't, you know, like for any citizens, it's like Lawrence and Douglas County to try to get engagement. So we would hope that people would engage in that way. When you do this type of planning, that's very specific to a user group. Typically, the people who participate in these processes are people who are cyclists. And oftentimes we're reaching out specifically to their networks. So regardless of where they live in the county, if they're part of the bicycle club or they bicycle, you know, a bicycle club in Baldwin City or Udora, we would catch whoever we would catch in some of those user groups.
And the reason I ask is I live west of Lone Star Lake, up in the southwest part of the county and are the people that live out there, are how again specifically do they get to give input?
They would be asked to give input just as anyone when we advertise and do all of our relations related to like Lawrence and Douglas County bike plan update. So a lot of people were probably catching because they're targeted users. They're targeted users. They're already interested in bicycling or they bicycle or honestly, they dislike bicycles. Those are a lot of the people who, when you say see a bike plan update, they want to come and be excited to give input to this process. So they would have to see something that we did in any of our public relations. There's not a specific meeting location that was necessarily there. They would have to either be an be an audience that was targeted because they're interested in bicycling or just part of the target of the city-county-wide efforts.
Okay.
Is it fair to say that you organize communication, you try to do that around the communities that have an interest as opposed to just the community at large or?
Yeah. So it's some of both, some things like when we do the thirty-day public comment period, that's getting, you know, you're publishing a public news press release in the newspaper or putting out, you know, our email list. And we have hundreds of members involved in our transportation planning or bicycle planning. We would reach out like for these plans, we went and talked to any specific user or group that would have an interest in bicycling. So in terms of like, yeah, like, you know, they ride Lawrence, you know, that the central rotary operates or bike clubs or those sort of things. And we have members of our on our advisory committee help us do that because they are plugged into these different communities. So the cyclists in Baldwin City and Udora or in our county representatives, we actually have had at that time when we were doing this plan, had somebody on the committee that lived in unincorporated Douglas County who was a member of a bike club and was representing those interests. And he's someone who actually commutes or, you know, at the time did commute for work from unincorporated parts of the county into the city. And so we get a lot of that feedback from the representative people that we have on the steering committee. When we form those, we try to cast the broadest net that we can to try to get a lot of different perspectives from somebody who, you know, may be in town biking. We try to get parents who may be biking with kids to, you know, to get kind of all ranges to understand a lot of perspectives. Are we going to maybe have, you know, knowing that we have one or two spots in the, you know, for Douglas County to a point, does that maybe going to represent everyone? No, but our goal is to try to get an understanding of a broad perspectives of cycling.
While we're on the topic, I can interrupt so much, but the I'm wondering about this, the kind of piggybacking on what Charlie's thinking. I would think a valuable community and you might have reached out to this community, people who would like to bike but are are not part of it because they're too afraid. They're they're too unsure. They don't know how to bike in town because I run into a lot of people.
A couple of minutes. Let us show you the slides because we heard from a lot of people.
Okay.
Okay. And so I think you'll see that in some of the response of what we heard from people.
All right. So in the community engagement process, there's some major themes that we did hear about, both benefits and barriers to bicycling. Talk about barriers in a minute. Some of the benefits that we hear from the community is the personal health benefits of exercise, environmental impacts of getting around by bicycle, just enhancing their mobility options, people that maybe don't have a car. You know, biking allows them to to reach a lot more destinations or reach bus stops and things like that, as well as similarly equity. And yeah, so those are some of the benefits. Some of the barriers to bicycling that we heard from surveys are summarized here, the top five for each plan. There's a lot of overlap between the two. Aggressive speeding drivers being a big one in both Lawrence and countywide. Weather, obviously, we can't do anything about, but things like building dedicated facilities, trying to improve the roadway conditions or building to connect the network are all all things we can have some control and work to improve.
Could you go back just for just a second, please? This one consumed that. Thank you.
And to back up for a second. So this this is so for the Lawrence Lawrence survey, we had about five hundred seventy-three responses to that Lawrence specific and about forty-five for the countywide.
Is that good?
I think it's pretty reasonable for the level of effort that we are able to put in with two full-time staff and two interns without a lot of additional staff interest, like ability to table, because a lot of this engagement we're getting because we are tabling at existing places, people are. So we're going to community events. We're going to the library and just open tackling and literally talking to every person that we can get to. I mean, we get probably a majority of all of our surveys through every survey process come to us in paper and we input, we're inputting data. So based on our capacity, we feel like this is pretty reasonable.
I think it's also fair to say is the amount of work just a compo do with two people and two interns is better than some places do with five people and ten interns. So it's a very high productive effort they do with two people.
Yeah. And we were really blessed in this process because members of the committee came out and tabled with us. They went on, you know, they helped go on rides with us of our steering committee because they're also very passionate about this work and helped us frame some of the work we're doing and listen to concerns because they're also advocating in other ways related to some of the planning work that we have done, like things like the Lawrence and Douglas County rideability map. So they they also, I think, have a value in listening and hearing what other people are saying outside of their own single bikes bicycling perspective. And so many of those members helped us table and do events, which expands our capacity.
So this survey question asked people if if they would ride their bicycle more often if they felt they could do it safely. So this is kind of to your point about most people who maybe don't feel safe or comfortable. In both Lawrence and county, seventy-one percent of respondents said they strongly agreed or somewhat agree that they would ride more if they could do it safely. So level of comfort really relates to this and whether it's real or perceived safety. And we'll get into kind of design standards and how to how to create a higher level of comfort and higher safety for people as we go on. So our next question, comfort bicycling on different forms of bicycle facilities. And so on the left, we have the different type of facility, protected bike lane or cycle track being the safest and most 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 comfortable and most separated from traffic and vehicles. Not surprisingly, that's the most comfortable for people. Seventy-three percent of people say they're very comfortable on that type of facility. And then going down the list, buffered bike lane is is just a bike lane with a little bit of a separation, but no physical barrier from traffic. There's a small section of that on on Mass streets, just by South Park. So forty-four percent of people, and then just going down the list to conventional bike lane or a shared lane marking or or no facility. Obviously, the comfort gets less and less.
And and this was a visual preference survey. So we gave people pictures of facility and asked them, how comfortable would you feel on this? We did it both for commercial streets and local streets because that matters too. So we had two separate lists to kind of start to understand as people are responding. How would they feel if that they were in this kind of space? Because I think not everybody knows what those mean. Yeah.
So that was Lawrence. And then next slide is the countywide. Pretty similar results.
I would not have called the one on Massachusetts Street. I didn't think that was called the buffered one.
There are sections of it that has it has a buffer.
And that's considered a buffer that space.
Famous space is considered a buffer to get to protect. That's when you have a buffer, but it has a physical something in it. So like an armadillo, one of those rubber armadillos, that's a bolt to the ground or like a flex post.
Like that's what they would call it. Yeah.
So next question is just asking about what what should be prioritized? And asking if we should equally prioritize the needs of people who bicycle, other travel modes. And seventy-five percent of respondents in Lawrence agreed that bicycling should be equally prioritized with other travel modes. County was a little bit less, sixty-four percent.
These are the same people though, that were providing feedback on biking in general. So probably that community as opposed to community at large.
Yes.
All right.
Yeah. And we we understand that, like in this thing, but we're trying to, I think, start to show the conversation about as we're talking about bicycling in relationship to other things, where should they lie? And right now Bike Ped as part of like the overall transportation budget is like two percent. So there's still a lot of room for improvement before we even get to equal, I think, to show that there's increasing value of importance on for people for safe facilities for future bicycle.
So next slide has vision and goals for the Lawrence bikes plan, improving safety. And regarding fatalities and serious injuries, the goal is zero through twenty twenty-five. And as of twenty twenty-one, that continued to be zero. So that's good. Increasing ridership. So this this one's kind of hard to measure. The census does ask a question on primary commute method. And as of twenty twenty-one, it was one point three percent of people using bicycle. The goal is to get it three percent by twenty twenty-five. And bike to school. The goal is five percent by twenty twenty-five. And as of twenty twenty-one, it was three point seven. This does vary a lot from school to school. They do kind of surveys at each school or counts at each school to to gauge that. Sunflower has eight point six percent and from the high end in Schwagler is around a half percent. And there's also Jessica will talk about people walking to school, but that's also a big big part of that as well.
And we wanted to kind of give you those examples, I think, because in your mind, you can think about where those schools may be located. And there are a lot of different barriers for some schools in terms of roadways, right? Clinton Parkway, Iowa, in terms of Schwagler versus a school that may be more neighborhood focused.
They could either consolidate the catchment area, like in Sunflower, you've got that Parkway, which kind of creates the neighborhood.
Right.
Whereas Schwagler, you've got Twenty-third Street, which kind of divides it.
Other other goals are to increase access. So the percentage of population within a quarter mile of what we call level of comfort three or better. Will will shows kind of what the level of comfort in some of those facilities are. And then the low-stress network as well as increasing the mileage of the of the low-stress bikeways to forty-six percent.
That means the grades, how hard is this to write it?
No, that that's actually the level of stress that we we measure by the volume of traffic and speed of traffic.
Okay.
So high stress is going to be on a busy pass road.
Got you. Got you. Okay, cool. I really did not understand what that meant.
The countywide plan also has vision and goals. So these talk about fatalities and serious injuries again. Also talks about signage. Douglas County specific is improving separation and distance from roadside safety during whenever there's a project, hundred percent of the time, making those improvements when it's identified as a future bikeway. Baldwin City has a goal of increasing their mileage in Udora similarly. So we also have action plans that kind of are steps for implementing these projects. So and you can't read those.
Paul, tell me about the signage. I rode before I moved here, I rode my bike to work for years and years in a very populated area. My sense from the people that talk to me out in the country is there is such I don't want to say distaste. Some people say bicycles should not be out in the country, riding out there. But I never see any signage that is and I'm talking about the blacktop that goes out to Lone Star Clinton and and circles around the store. It says, be friendly, bike friendly. And do you, what plans are there for the signage that you're talking about out in the country?
Would a would a sign do that?
It can't hurt. I will tell you that.
Have educational signs that are approved. So this, we don't talk about it in this and we don't have, well, we don't have the map shown and to talk about in this presentation. But the work we did with the Bicycle Advisory Committee really talked about, instead of just like bike friendly or share the road signs, what actually they would prefer and what they're kind of looking at as more effective because Kansas has a three-foot passing law is to put up the legal three-foot passing law signs. And we did some work to identify locations throughout the county where those should be installed and it's in the plan. The next step is really figuring out, I think, prioritizing and budgeting those for implementation, which we haven't seen happen yet. Additionally, not in the county, but in the urban areas, the city of Lawrence budgeted in their capital improvement plan for next year, wayfinding work related to bike and ped and doing some study of that. So I would assume in terms of some of the larger signage picture throughout the county that some of that may become part of a larger conversation. We have some provisions. It's really up to at that point, you know, some of the local governments to implement those. And we've had some conversation about at different times about trying to, you know, look for to to project how much that would cost and look for some grant money to do a one-time installation of stuff. And it's on the list, but I think it's just hasn't, it hasn't happened.
Because it just cannot hurt to have anything that says, I mean, three feet is not is not enough room anyway, but to pull over. Bicycles have just as much ride to be on the roadway as you do in an automobile. But anything that that says that, now I will, this is an aside perhaps, Lone Star Church. We just built a built a pavilion at the church. Very lots of cyclists come through there and we are talking about how can we use the church and that as a stop for cyclists on the way out and including a restroom out there that they could have access to. Yeah. Yes.
If you host a pancake breakfast, that'll be there.
Oh, yeah. I mean, we we do that, but but just on a regular day to have that available to cyclists is one of the things we are talking about doing. And I think other churches, whether it be Warden, which is harder to get to, Stoll, the Clinton Church, if you're talking about going, but I think that churches, this, the country churches can play a role in in helping cyclists destination. Oh, yeah. Gosh, all we have to do is get out to Lone Star and stop, get a drink, use restroom, do whatever and head back. And we're going to talk with some of the organizers of the bicycle rides about how we can be helpful. That's, I don't know where all that fits in.
I think it does fit in. And I think that I think, you know, that's one example, but I think there's probably a lot of private business, private entity responsibility for supporting cycling culture in our community. And whether that's from an employee perspective in terms of offering showers or having, you know, secure interior bike parking for long things. We, you know, we do other work besides just some of these big city or county bike plans. And one of which is, you know, downtown parking assessment for bikes and other things. And we hear about a lot of those things from individual employees and employers. Programmatically, though, that work doesn't fall on anybody's plate. This is where it becomes really challenging. So as the MPO, we do planning work and we can get involved in some of the implementation. But when it gets to operation of some of these programs, it really falls beyond the scope of our role as regional planners. And so without building networks of support and relationships in all of the local governments and having them want to prioritize these things or having a local advocacy group, like a lot of people modeled the one in Missouri called PedNet, without having some of that local interest in advocacy, arranging some of these things and working on some of this cultural stuff, it becomes really hard to implement. And it just then oftentimes we find it's in the plan. And we experienced that here. I think a lot of cities experience that until they get a more professional level advocacy group that's doing some of this work very intentionally and parallel with the local governments.
So some of the major steps for implementing the plans is incorporating bikeways into roadway projects. Whenever there's a a road that needs to be redone or expanded, whatever, incorporating bikeways with that. Also standalone bike projects. Grants and private funding. You know, Jessica mentioned, I think, around two percent of the transportation budget goes towards bike and ped only. So grants can can really help advance projects. Leveraging private development also make necessary improvements. Safe routes to schools and Jessica will talk more about that. Maintenance of bikeways and then traffic signal prioritization. So county also has an action plan of different steps to take for the cities and non-incorporated. So there's education enforcement. So there's education enforcement, evaluation, engineering. And then next we have our existing and planned network. So this map maybe takes takes a minute to digest. So the. The blue line is our priority network that's been identified as kind of the top level of. Our highest priority to implement, um some of it's already built. You can see when it's a solid line, um like the Lawrence Loop, where it's down west, where it's green. Up up north, where it's dashed, it's uh planned. The yellow is the secondary network, which is the next highest priority and the things that are. Not highlighted in blue or yellow are are also priorities, but um it's not.
There's a blue dedicated path not on the road.
Not necessarily, no, so there's the.
How do you differentiate?
Smaller line inside, so.
Okay.
Green where it's where it's a shared use path off the roadway. A red is.
Okay.
Bike lane.
Okay.
So Paul's going to get into talking about, because you can see the future facilities, we just say this should be a future bike way. And that changed from the previous plan, because the previous plan um we had uh some consultants come in and do. And they said, oh, this should be a future bike lane, this should be a future this, this should be a future that. Well, we would get into implementing and we'd be like, well, we don't have right of way or that's not really the level of comfort that we need for this roadway. Because maybe it's changed in terms of operational characteristics with speed and volume. And so we tried to create a plan that's more adaptive. And what it allows for is anywhere where we you see dash lines that say future facility. And we're going to show you some design matrix that bases it on speed and volume. And again, we talked about that level of comfort three, there's a place where that falls on there to say, based if you have a higher volume, higher um speed roadway. And you're adding a bike way, you have to add increased protection to get to that level of three comfort. And so that ties back to kind of creating the policy metric we want. But not dictating before we get to do the engineering and community work on that specific roadway project, what element should be there?
You know, on that map, this is the first time I've seen the environmental justice zone on a map. Is so is that specific for biking or is that environment for the planning office in general?
So the MPO does, in all of our plans, you will see evaluation of environmental justice zone. Or we have another analysis called transportation disadvantaged populations. The environmental justice zone is a federally required provision to understand disparity in transportation distribution of assets and condition. And that is based on low and minority populations, based on census data. And we get that from HUD, from housing, from community development block groups, so we use their same layer for low to mod. At block groups and the other part of that is minority populations. And so in this um in this version of EJ, because we have a new one, we're just creating for the TIF. That's at any block group that's over a hundred and fifty percent of the uh average, the county wide average. Um and so, of course, all of the EJ areas, um which we'd find in an urban area when we're using county populations for our boundaries. Are within the city of Lawrence. Um and so this should, this shows you, and we have some provisions when we talk about performance measures um about. When we're thinking about access or uh to networks and stuff, we show data oftentimes in relationship to the entire. City or the entire county and then our EJ areas, because we're starting, we're starting, we've started over time. And we're continuing to elevate our work into understanding how different communities are impacted by transport, multi metal transportation access. And so the tip, um our transportation improvement program, which is another federally required document we create, which is more like a capital improvement program. But for transportation projects only, that has a lot more extensive analysis of um EJ areas or transit service. In relation or project selection in relationship to those areas.
I saw environmental, I thought wetlands, not socio economic.
Yeah, it's a federal, environmental justice is a federal term and we also often have to define it.
Yeah.
Um in our places, so this map we shortened for you, but in a lot of them, we have definitions on the bottom of them.
Just so the commissioner remembers, you also have a definition of environmental justice as part of Plan Twenty Forty in one of your sidebars.
Thank you.
So all all of our prioritized projects of blue and yellow are part of a non motorized prioritization list. That helps build the five year bike ped CIP capital improvement plan. Um so there's, there's kind of a matrix that helps prioritize which project should be um completed first.
So and as you've talked previously to the Multimodal Transportation Commission, that's work that they are doing. We have worked with them to develop a scoring system, a methodology to individually score all of these projects. And they have costs built into that where they're the annual money that the city budgets for um bike. Standalone bike ped projects is getting selected based on approved plans, so it's the pipeline, right? We've done planning, how do we get it to implementation for standalone projects?
Um and so other projects are. That are not on that list are, we kind of rely on routine maintenance or reconstruction. Um development to build out those facilities. Recent examples of of projects built would be the. Projects built in that manner would be twenty third Street being reconstructed now as well as nineteenth Street. Um those are more roadway projects, but they're adding bike facilities with them. So we also have a a similar map for the the county area as well.
And so Charlie, this may interest you in the county, you can see the areas that have the blue lines, some of those routes out to Lone Star. And you can see there's more and more, I think, as we go along, that have moved from future bike way to paved shoulder. So as we think about county routes, that spectrum of comfort, those facility types for that is really talking about. A a paved shoulder to give people space, which has safety improvements for all users.
From the south end of the dam over to, I call it the Lone Star Corner. That was a great improvement for cyclists right there, and I would tell you, a friend of mine hit and killed. A cyclist at the Lone Star Corner. And it is devastating to the to the driver. Uh I so that was a great project to have that.
And I think we'll continue to see more of those, we know, for example, the fifty six project that KDOT's getting ready to do. Is going to include paved shoulders, I think. Because of also design standards for rural roads, that's also increasing the pressure for paved shoulders for roadway safety. For departure safety, even for vehicles, um so it's not just a bicycle benefit. Um but we start, we'll start to see, I think, over time, the continued development of paved shoulders in the county. Which matters to a lot of people.
Is there a copy, yes, a hard copy someplace?
Yeah, absolutely. Do you want the entire plan or just this map?
The entire plan.
Yes, absolutely, we can do that for you, yep.
The next slide talks about. Of the cross country routes. As uh these are, pardon my slides are out, and I write notes here. So these are designated largely by by KDOT or other national groups that are routes that go through Kansas or across the entire country. These are not necessarily um prioritized locally um for implementation at the moment. But they are, they're they're more tourism um and recreation focused than than transportation focused.
The key about these, I think, is these are the routes people are using if they're doing cross country trips. And so um regardless of the fact of where they fall in our existing or plan. Um this is something new, we added to the plan when we did this plan because we hadn't done it. We hadn't done that in previous plans, but to really recognize and call attention to, we're part of a bigger network and system. And in some places, we we had conversations between um the Bicycle Advisory Committee and KDOT. To uh to renavigate some of these, to existing facilities. So in cases where like the Lawrence Loop had been developed through the urban areas, um move the route to that. So we're directing people to infrastructure that is the best available to connect to them based on existing conditions. I think there was conversation too about, you know, there could be conversation or local advocacy, I know there's some interest in connecting. Um like Baldwin City to Lawrence and some of those things with Baldwin City's work on trail development, Maple Leaf Trail, Trail Development. Especially they're working to the south right now, um but I think you could see this is kind of the start of that conversation. Um and it will need to continue into the future, because there isn't really any active implementation of these outside of each of the local governments. Just efforts on their own networks.
Okay, so now the next slide uh talks about. Um the different design uh options, kind of the. Different types of facilities, so we we've talked about these, but now we have the images to help better illustrate what those are. As well as the um facility selection criteria, so. I don't know how, how well you can see that, but it it talks about the um volume and speed and volume. It's the the blue line and a graph and the speed is in the yellow orange. Uh so that when we come to implement projects, we can use this to help decide what type of. Facility is is appropriated based on the speed and volume. Of a comment period, I did mention at the end of these plans, as there, we have a final draft ready for review, there's a thirty day period. And we open up for for comments at that time.
I think one other thing I may notice that all in all of the plans you find that we do, we have a very transparent documentation of public. Comments received to us, so sometimes you'll look at our planning document and there are hundreds of pages. And the great thing about that is, um if you use them online, you can word find, so if you're looking for somebody who comments about a certain thing. You can word find to go look for that, if that's ever of interest to you to find out about something coming about a particular street or location or thing as you're doing your work. Um but also I think it's there, you know, just we try to incorporate and show how we're using that in the plan to drive the conversation that we're setting the tone for. Um but it also provides transparency in showing people what what we collected, so that's all available to you, it's available to the public. Um and I'd encourage you as you're looking at any issues ever related to some of the, any of these specific topics. To go take a look at some of that information.
Do you, how do you think about? You you combination of. Um the the impact of of traffic and high volume traffic and making it safe. When you, when you think about carving off a piece of Mass Street, which is arguably one of our higher traffic streets for bike lanes. When you've got a street that runs north and south, just to the east of it, just to the west of it. Is there any thought that says, hey, why don't we choose a path of less resistance? Why don't we choose a path that already has a substantially less amount of traffic? And and work to prioritize that for bike traffic, not just exclusively for bike, but wouldn't that serve all of the goals that you have?
I think there are some different perspectives in relationship to that. There can be options, I think, where a parallel alternative is planned. So in our bike way plan, as we think about parallel alternatives, Sixth Street is a good example of that. Um from the new signal by Casey's to connect back, we have not called for the bike way to happen on Sixth Street. We've called for the bike way to happen on Fifth Street to connect to Bertram Park, uh Fifth Street, then back to Sixth Street where where there is no parallel. Fifth Street doesn't go through all the way, just like Seventh Street doesn't go through all the way. So there's some, there's also some theory to be said for bicycling that you can't do this. Right, like this isn't, this is not a good ride. And so you have to consider other things like geography and other things too, so things have evolved. We had that same conversation with cyclists, both community and our Bicycle Advisory Committee in relationship to developing the Twenty First Street Bicycle Boulevard. Where some people said, well, we should just go off one block and you have a route that's less straight um and develop it there. But I think the reality of that is we have other benefit wins for Twenty First Street, where you had a local street that was not classified. You know, as collector and above that, it should have been nineteenth or twenty third, that that was operating at a higher capacity. Because the width of the street, people weren't parking on it, it's a neighborhood street, it has driveways. And so really, as the direct route, it was decided through that process and think, looking at the network. Then you also want to provide some direct connectivity for cyclists. And so it's a balance, I think, between benefiting the safety of all transportation users. Because I think people who, we've heard from people who live on those blocks now, that say traffic was calmed also for their benefit, even though they don't bike. And you know, we branded ours as Bicycle Boulevard, it could be branded as a neighborhood greenway, uh safe safer streets. There's other brands to that and it's about slowing traffic in places where it shouldn't just be necessarily through. To get back to your Mass Street conversation, the city um has a future CIP project. That's going to look at continuing the bike infrastructure from fourteenth then to the connection. So we've built a signal now to cross Mass Street. Um and there's a future, I don't know exactly what year it got programmed in, but there's a future work to be done. Um to connect the Twenty First Street to the Fourteenth Street part, and that's a lot of that is part of prioritizing what we've called the priority network. Because you hear in one of the reasons people said there's disconnected facilities or they're not comfortable enough. And so it's really prioritizing that standalone investment of money to make connections.
I I think this this topic is so important for us and we have to find great ways to get people to and from where they want to go in our city. In ways other than a car, I'm a hundred percent on board for that, but I also realize we live in a city with a lot of cars. And a lot of people who don't have a bike or can't bike or choose not to, for whatever reason. It just seems to me that to the degree we can enable both, as opposed to, as opposed to trying to find compromise. For both at the same spot, but enables fully both, it would make sense for us to accomplish all the goals that we have.
I think it's going to be a continued conversation we have to have, because another uh uh street as we talk about that was on the traffic calming list for decade. Um is Thirteenth Street, we have that slated for as a future bike way. So thinking about that connection from Mass to Haskell to Loop. It's a residential street, has driveways facing it, it's very wide, the local street. Cars are clock traveling seventy miles an hour on that street. And so this is, this is, I think this is kind of to your point, of which cases we have streets already where people operate. With unsafe behaviors.
Yeah.
And when we can develop physical infrastructure that impacts how they operate by narrowing lanes and making dedicated spaces. We benefit everyone, not just bicyclists, so it's not necessarily a compromise, it's to the public benefit of everyone. If it's the same if we think about doing um doing chicanes or if we do um, you know, different traffic calming. That that on a street benefits a lot of.
This argument, the traffic calming is important, but it's a separate conversation from building out a capability for bike traffic in our community.
But if I might speak to someone who personally bikes up in Massachusetts Massachusetts Street, that is one, if you go over one street east, New Hampshire doesn't go all the way through. I can't get to.
And it's a rough road to begin with, all I'm saying is you put that same energy and concentrate that on intentional paths and improve that so that it can be. I'm not saying that New Hampshire.
But New Hampshire doesn't go through.
Yeah.
There's no, there's no way to go through all the way through town on New Hampshire. You can do that on Tennessee, going one way and Kentucky one way, but no one bikes on reservation. Um but so Mass Street is the through north south street. I mean, that's it, is a through north north south street. And as somebody who bikes on that, I can tell you that it did calm traffic, not only do I feel safer on that street. Traffic slowed and I hope, I imagine there's some data to back that up, it's not just my.
Yes.
My.
I have yet to see a biker on that, that shirt, that that little bike lane going down Mass Street.
Yeah.
I have yet to.
Oh.
It's just me, that's just.
Okay, well, I bike it.
Yeah.
All the time and I see lots of people, I'd like to see more people.
All right.
But I still see a lot of people on sidewalks biking, because they, being next to the cars is, and and certainly with kids. People've got kids, little kids, they're on the sidewalk.
Yeah, that's where I go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that can be just as dangerous, because you have driveways and people backing who are not expecting someone traveling at the speed of a bicycle to be crossing. And so there is a lot of conversation about moving um to some of those lower volume streets where now every driveway is an access point.
Or you start having bike pedestrian.
Yes, and there's a lot of, there's something to be said culturally about designating streets that you want to work for everyone. And showing that in a public way, like on Mass Street, as opposed to saying, oh, you're a bicyclist, you go over here. And so I think it's about creating safer spaces for everyone and creating that very visual public culture. That we are a community that has streets that work for everyone. Um I think there's a lot of conversation, but these are the types of conversations that we're having with our bicycles advisory steering committee. People who bicycle all the time from all parts of the community as we talk about what works for them in routing and vision. what works for them and routing and vision to get to a goal of a comfortable network.
It's critically important work.
One thing, every time things get narrowed or shut down, you put more traffic on some of the other streets. And Nineteenth is called a collector, but it is driveways all the way from the fairgrounds to Iowa. And that street, you put more and more traffic on Nineteenth Street, making it less safe all the time.
I had to go to Nineteenth because Twenty First changed, yeah.
When Twenty First Street was taken out, wars on there. And now with the mess on Twenty Third Street, everything else, Nineteenth Street is dangerous.
Exactly. Nineteenth Street is shut down.
Yeah.
And shut down for, and it's still, I'm, well, I'm just talking down where I say it's getting worse and worse all the time. And if you're going to shut down Thirteenth Street too, it's at the cost of everyone on Nineteenth Street.
I think there's some other things happening too with relationship to KU and transit changes that are impacting some of that. Transit had this KU transit had significantly cut service to a lot of their routes. So they don't have the frequency they used to. A lot more people are driving their numbers for ridership for a third of what they were pre-COVID. So I, there are, it's not, I mean, we're doing things changing. There's also other changes that are happening, I think, that are impacting trips on the network.
Nineteenth has a painted bike lane that is dangerous as hell because you're driving right over culverts. And so most people are on the sidewalks and those are small lots, so many driveways, short driveways. So this is not. You're creating it. The situation is just getting worse and worse on that one street and it just seems to constantly be and now with it being opened through the business park or the fairgrounds.
So as an example for planning for Nineteenth, so as more and more traffic goes on Nineteenth, would you look at the facility that's there now, which is just a painted bike lane? Could that in your planning then eventually as traffic increases?
I'm going to guess it already probably is not a very high level of comfort and it's probably already even already in the plan. Like based on the thing, even if you have a facility like a painted bike lane, if it doesn't meet the level of comfort, when we would go back and touch that street, we would say this doesn't meet the level of comfort. It needs to be three or higher. So just because a bikeway is there does not mean that's what the plan calls for us.
The bikes that should be there. Into another category.
Walker, Walker Russ is probably a good example of the conversation that's happened there in terms of the next section they're doing where bike, you know, the the plan, other part further to the north has existing bike lane on street. And then it was a conversation of, well, that's not, we already know, we put bike lane there, just not even that long ago in the last five years. And that's not meeting our level of comfort in this plan. So to meet the level of comfort, we either need a cycle tracker, a shared use path. And so what you saw in the future proposed design is shared use path and the transition to that facility type. And so I think those conversations are happening. They're happening with the multimodal transportation commission. They are using the tools that we have available in the plan to try to help drive some of those decisions about design that's getting implemented. The other side of that is budget. And, and I think that's the limitation in some, some places where many of the bike lanes you see out on the street now, they were not because the road was reconstructed necessarily. They were because we did street maintenance and we said, oh, well, we could fit a bike lane in here. And so I would say probably many of those were retrofit situations, not necessarily where we reconstructed or rebuilt, reconstructed a street with a bike lane, because Nineteenth is a good example where the bike lane is not very comfortable to most people. It really, it really serves as traffic calming and narrowing, which does create more space that that's already a very narrow.
They also don't have rooms to put in a dedicated bike lane or widen that road because that would put you right in people's living.
Yeah.
So.
And so it's a, it's a lot of conversation because people who cycle and feel more comfortable and I'm going to cycle everywhere, no matter what, right? They just have more comfort. They say, give us space because it's better for us. And people who don't cycle but would cycle if they could be more safe, say, well, I would never cycle on that. And so it's this balance that not even all the cyclists say the same thing about the facility. And so we kind of came to the conclusion in the plan with the cyclists that we worked with and from the community, something is better than nothing, but it's not ideal. And the ideal is to build this level of three or higher. Because you, you still build a culture by having some of those facilities. And if we can get some of the higher level connections, then maybe you just have to feed in a small part of that to something that's a higher level of comfort.
Just a quick check, two things, one on one, good time check. We've got one more topic for about thirty minutes away from the hard stop. And just one, before we, we can talk whatever way you guys want to, I want to check with the folks that are online. They're joining us from Zoom, Prasab and Steve. Do you have any questions or comments? Make it kind of hard for you to jump in.
Yeah, I'm good, Gary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, nothing here. Just taking it all in. Appreciate the time this morning.
All right. Thanks.
I know we had traffic counters out on the again, Lone Star Blacktop headed out that way. Do we have bike counters that we know how many people traverse the unincorporated county roads?
It do, on my knowledge, there are not bike ped counts besides some manual ones that we've done in abuse spots. There is the technology available. I don't know that the county has ever used it. We have it in the urban areas because as part of neighborhood traffic management. The city engineers have purchased some bike ped counters. We're still testing out what that looks programmatically. We haven't gone back and done manual bike ped counts. That's where we put somebody for two hours and there's supposed to be a methodology. The problem is that doesn't work for county trips because we're, those ratios are built on when people are there in urban areas, right? It's a national program that's really targeted to urban areas. And so if I go put somebody out, you know, over lunch on a it, it doesn't work.
Yeah.
Um, for the two hour period. So we really would need tube counters. Uh, it's something we could talk to the county about. I don't know that they've ever done them. They may before projects. Sometimes if they have a consultant or, you know, they're doing an engineering study before a project, they may, it's not something that feeds into a database I have.
Okay. I, I think those counting things are are interesting because it's a chicken or egg issue, whereas if you're looking at a roadway and people don't feel safe biking on, it's going to be very few bicycles passing that tube. So, but if they built it to be safe, there'd be a lot of people on it. So depending on which way you're looking at it, you don't want to have that tube counter determine, well, there's nobody on this road.
Yeah.
So.
And it is example of that when we built a lighted pathway between South Park and campus. We did before and after counts of that. And there was like a three to four fold increase of usage, bike and ped together of that corridor, the wind and once they lit it. So it gives you an idea like people and we, you know, we counted at nighttime hours. We looked when, you know, the lights were on. Was we were, you know, kind of creepy sitting in our car, counting people. You know, before we did that. But um, I think those are some examples of things where you build the case where it's like, yeah, nobody was out walking, biking. Now we've made this lighted facility and oh my goodness, people, everybody came to use it.
And I think there's, there's certainly more of a culture in Lawrence and Douglas County of accepting bicycle riders. Think what in the name of thunder must it be like in whatever towns that don't, that don't have any idea about cycling is okay.
Yeah. Well, and this leads into my next topic of safe routes to schools because I think this is the entry level for all of those other places, because I think it's really hard for people to debate that, to say that kids should not deserve to be able to bike and walk to school. And land use decisions and school citing around schools and a lot of places have made that not possible. Just because of how that far they've located off on a rural, you know, where land was available or cheap. And we are fortunate, I think, and you'll see in some of the stuff we talk about to have neighborhood schools. And I think that's a really big part of a conversation um, that's still going to play out here in relationship to how we do this work. So if you're ready, unless you, you have no public.
Please jump in.
So we have done safe routes to school planning in Lawrence, Udora and Baldwin City. I'm going to talk primarily about Lawrence today, although I can answer questions about any of them. The plan in Morrison is obviously the most robust because there's the most quantity of schools. Safe routes to schools in national framework. So they have a methodology, really, that's about all the things that safe routes to school should engage. When we did this planning process, we had done safe routes to school planning work before, but we didn't write a plan. So we had some maps and we had some, oh yeah, there's some different programs happening. But there was no written plan. And so the next process when we engage this is a partnership of City of Lawrence, Public Works, Public Health, USD four ninety seven, we invited different private schools to participate, although many of them because of their dispersment and not having boundaries, don't necessarily have a lot of kids walking and biking. So we got very little participation in that regard. But um, and just thinking about a coalition about how, you know, what, what's law enforcement's role? What's our mission for communication about a lot of different things? So we're thinking, trying to think holistically about walking and biking to school in relationship to all of these elements. The thing people think about the most is obviously engineering. Is there sidewalk or bike infrastructure, but for kids mostly sidewalks or crossings? Um, in relationship to school that we have traffic controls or crossing guards, those are the things that people want to talk about, which is mostly city programming. But I think there, there are other parts of this program and and again, when I talked about advocacy and the role of other organizations, so thinking about walking school buses and, you know, how the community driven nature of those or volunteer crossing guards as opposed to a paid crossing guard program or student crossing guards. There's a lot of programmatic stuff that could be different based on what some of the other partners would want to participate in based on best practices. We're not there in the, all of those regards, but we have made significant progress in some things. And so we'll talk about those things. Um, we started this process in the winter of twenty nineteen. And doing some research, we, we will talk about our data gathering in the parent survey. We worked with public health a lot to get that into schools. We put together kind of our existing conditions and then we went back to evaluating routes and we have some, we worked with the school district and we'll show you some cool mapping that we did to look at student densities all in those boundary areas to make some priority routes. If we're investing our limited resources in gap infill and crossings, let's do it where we can funnel the most kids into routes um, that go to schools. And so we did that for each of the schools. Uh, and then we went back out and did some open house and engagement and we'll talk about that. And then we put it on pause and waited because schools were closed before we came back and did some, a public, final public comment and approval. Um, so like I mentioned, we began a long time ago and that first effort really was led in twenty fourteen by public health. Um, and no plan was written. We have since then implemented a lot of some of the other programming stuff. So bike and walk to school days at, at many of the schools that choose to participate. A big win, I think, is Lawrence Bicycle Education and Safety Training, which has been incorporated into the curriculum and public, uh, public health wrote grants and got bike fleets for the school district. They're working on them also in Bull, Udora, I think has one and they're working on some for Baldwin City, but that's on bike, bike education and P. That's really valuable. It's an equity concern. Lots of kids may not have the access to bikes at home. Um, and so this is teaching how to, how to ride, how to do so safely. And um, it, it's really exciting for the kids to get to get on bikes. Um, and then also we have made some, some progress in adding miles of sidewalk gap and crossings. When we talk about what's happening in terms of this data, um, we.
Back to you for just a second.
Yes.
Back up just one.
Yeah.
Four point seven miles of sidewalk gap. So so how does the, how does the, how do you think about the policy of sidewalks on both sides of the street? Is that, does that factor into what you think about safe routes to schools?
It does. So we did, I, I don't have it all in here. It's in the plan. We asked people about what they thought in terms of sidewalks on one side, on two sides versus if it's an arterial street, a collector street or a local street. And for the most part, people desired them on both sides regardless. For the purpose of the plan and recognizing that we needed to prioritize our resources, the goals for the plan is sidewalks on both sides of the streets for arterials and collectors and one side on local streets for the safer routes. And we're talking about then gap infill um, on, on those, those segments. But I would, I mean, we didn't, we haven't gone back to look, but I imagine it'd be cool to go back and look and to see based on those areas, how much percentage of sidewalk ratio we have, like if that impacts kids walking and biking, or if it's more of a function of hey, nobody's here to take you to school, out the door you go, you know?
That's, that's been a big benefit on Nineteenth Street. As kids are on both sides of the street.
Right. Yeah.
Get across that street and all.
Particularly busy as it gets, yeah.
Because they're going down to Cordley and over to the junior high.
So, um, public health coordinates with USD four ninety seven every year to do travel tallies where they go into a lot of classrooms. They ask kids how to get to school. Um, and this is the overall summary results kind of of those schools. So you can see in fall of fourteen, we started, we were at about fourteen point three and then um, and we're all the way up in fall of twenty one to twenty two point two percent of kids who indicated they walked or biked to school. National average, I think, is quite lower.
It's gone because of COVID.
Yeah, they didn't collect data that year. They're getting ready to do these again. They do them in September. The fall ones in there working, public health is working right now.
Twenty twenty.
Yeah. You're walking the schools. Um, we also though, sorry, back to that other data, we, we did parent surveys. Um, we do the, we do those typically in a planning process that that asks some questions that I'm going to show you the results to. And then we did some school crossing guard counts to understand what was happening. A lot of crossing guards locations got placed over time. And then they were never removed, but they necessarily didn't no long, they no longer met the warrants of the program. So they didn't justify either having enough kids to walk or bike there, or the densities changed within the boundaries. There was no ever conversation. And that becomes into some recommendations we made and some changes that have happened. Okay. So we asked, um, this is from the parent survey and it asked people really to identify for us to help us understand what are barriers or motivating factors that are impact your kid's ability uh, to walk or bike to and from school. Um, and so you can see presence, equality of sidewalks are pretty big factors that are motivating. And um, you know, there's some stuff you can, we can see where we may have less impact on it again, weather, climate, tie of somebody's personal time, um, distance, obviously a little bit of policy question. But I think that kind of gives you an idea and we use this to drive the narrative and conversation about the work we're doing and safe routes to school programming. Next. So we work with the district to get anonymous student information. We don't, um, we're showing you this as an example. We don't publish all of these maps. It changes from year to year. Remember we're on a five year cycle for updating. We also have provisions in the conference change. We will go back and revisit these. This gives you an example though of showing you kind of where the density falls in relationship um, to Billy Mills. And you can see as a result gets us thinking about in yellow over here, we had the previous safe routes to school route. We looked at that, oh, the density pocket that's happening. We really need to plan a future uh, future route. And you can see the proposed route is in blue. Um, and as a result, that changes. Another thing we also look at for every school is walk sheds. So we have a model built that has all of the sidewalk now, existing sidewalk network and street connectors and crossings. And we basically take from the school, let's go a half a mile in half mile increments and show you what that distance is and what percentage of we can incorporate within those spaces, recognizing again, the farther you get out and the um, lower the age, the less likely you're going to have kids walking and biking, particularly if they have to do it alone. But these are the two things that we look at and um, and put, if you put them together all on one map, it gets really crazy. But um, we do that and we have them on a screen and we're looking at these as we're trying to prioritize. Okay, if we're looking at routes, where should we prioritize our investment of sidewalk or crossing improvements based on those routes? And so that's been the evolution now of how we've established and evolved those safe routes to school routes that we're working on. Um, so we, so we did all of this work and put proposed routes out and had our survey from our parent survey. And we hosted an open house and we had very low attendance. And so we said, okay, this isn't what we need to do. So instead we went back and contacted the schools and went to visit either the PTO or the PTA at every school. Or at least we asked to, um, and based on what they told us would be best for their school, we went and did all those visits. We provided them packets of engagement that gave, that laid out all of the stuff we were kind of looking for guidance on. Um, and in some cases they had some different options for choices um, and ways to connect things. And we wanted to get that information directly from that school to help us make that decision. And so we did that. In relationship to all of these tools and packets, we also had them all online that people could find. But most engagement came out of our work, going to specific school sites and help of having those PTOs or PTA specifically recruit engagement from their school for us. A very time intensive.
Were you the, if you were the queen of the world, how many people do you need in your department? Because I mean, I, I, it just seems evident that maybe seems evident to me, maybe that you are not a priority in this county. If there are only two of you and two interns and you are charged with doing, I, I mean. I I mean, the the things that you were doing.
So part of that staffing level function is a result of the federal funding we get and you'll be pleased to know that we are getting more money. And so there may be some things in store for us in the future.
I was thinking about
But that's a federal, federal.
A hologram of you and the schools and Paul, like, I mean, I
Yeah.
It's
A lot of capacity. I mean, we have built capacity. We, our interns are not making coffee.
Yeah.
And they have really good job placement because of it.
For the record, I make the coffee. That's because you just delegate everything.
And part of it's about bringing the right people together to start having these conversations and to make decisions and be willing to kind of say, okay, here's what it is. Let's move on and keep doing this work. It helps that it's on a cycle. We're not, you know, we're on a five year cycle. So we're not starting over. We're saying, here's our process. What didn't work last time? How do we recreate this? What else can we do? Yeah, we do the best we can do.
Good, you know, in addition to their day jobs, they have to show up for these.
You don't have to just do talk about doing.
Yes.
Speaking of that, we have about twelve minutes.
Okay, so we'll try to agree. So again, we have goals from each of those areas. We talked about the percentage increase and then about completing the network. Because those are the really uh critical things and and how we should do that. Okay, we realized from the first time we planned, we only made one set of maps and that was misleading. So what we did in this plan is we developed infrastructure maps, which is our plan plans. And then we developed encouragement, a new set of encouragement maps, because that's about what we give to people to walk and bike. So we don't want to show a safe route if it's only a future safe route and there's no sidewalk on it. So having one set of maps, you can see now how that's problematic. Especially when we show projects that may not still happen for a number of years, people may say, oh, that's going to be built next year. No, that's so we have different maps. Then we also realized at each of the schools, we really would benefit from having traffic circulation maps. And we have add, we made requests all the schools to get all a lot of this information. Not every school has given it to us. Um, and it hasn't necessarily been coordinated at the district level, but we have made them for every school that has given us information. And then they can use these beautiful generated maps to go to the next slide. Okay, well, I'll show you on another slide. Um, here's kind of the ra- routes of community wide. Um, so some sections. So when we look at totals later, some sections may contribute to part of a middle school route, but also an elementary route. But here is the network of streets um that is prioritized for two sides of sidewalk on collector and arterial and one side on local streets. Um, we have a lot of recommendations in this plan. So if you remember, we're going back to think holistically. It's about, people told us it's about how they, how comfortable they feel. So how people are driving and a lot of these types of programs um like neighborhood traffic management and our school area traffic control policy are impacting the things policy wise that are happening on the streets in general, just across neighborhoods and because we have neighborhood schools, that's valuable. We did establish um in twenty twenty one, an updated school area traffic control policy, which had some evaluation for school crossing guards in a more regular program. Which has allowed for us to, the city to be more adaptive and deploying on those resources. So we talk about traffic circulation maps. Here's an example of this. We work to develop these and public health hosts them on their website. They have a page for each school. So if your school gave us information or had information that we could digitize in a way, we standardized all of those to kind of communicate this information. Um, some schools had hand drawn notes, some schools had written directions that I would try to interpret and I'm like, I don't know. And so this was really to help bring some uh resource of mapping um to to those schools. Um, we recognize crossings both in safe routes and in the pedestrian plan as one of the most challenging points of contention for comfort. Um, and so we have some recommendations about some safe routes to school crossing improvements and and implementing them into non motorized prioritization and develop a crossing policy. And Multimodal Transportation Commission is working on that right now. They just had a study session about uh crossings and policy design. There's a consultant working on on a s- a small project for that. So there's some work happening on these things, which is really exciting. Um, again, we talked about that crossing guard program for safe routes and uh evaluating some of that yearly and we're doing that. Okay, constructing and maintaining routes. So all, a lot of the work, safe routes to schools are prioritized in the non motorized prioritization process. That's how a lot of those um segments have gotten in filled and prioritized in infill. That's also been largely driven by a lot of success that the city has had in getting awarded transportation alternative grants from the state of Kansas. So um between safe routes to school and the Lawrence Loop, over the last five years, on average, they've gotten a million dollars a year. And that's, that's huge um in terms of bike ped investment. And so a lot of work is being done on stand, those are all standalone bike ped projects. And so um that's really exciting. And I think there's continued conversation about even maintenance and ADA and sidewalk improvement that is just going to benefit kids walking and biking to school, assuming we have neighborhood schools. Okay, we went to work with, uh, we developed an MOU between the city and USD four ninety seven about how we're all going to work together. Um, and we have a a kind of an informal working group because of that. Um, that means as needed to do, to coordinate and do all this work because there's a lot of individual partners doing each of these pieces. Again, this is kind of the culture of walking and biking. These are some of our best practices and recommendations. Some of these things are happening, some of there, some of them aren't. Um, you can just kind of keep going through this. Here's the encouragement maps um that public, we work on the map side based on existing conditions of where sidewalks are and what the routes are and where crossing guards are. Uh, information for and show up what a half mile walk is to your school and then public health put together in partnership um this information to kind of give um that information
Really awesome.
Out to parents and those, this is a very time consuming sort of process. And these are hosted on the um, we've had staff changes that have kind of impacted our time efficiency. So these all should be hosted on the public health website and then schools have access to that. So, yeah, so again, we work to um track progress, you know, we're looking at the inventories of networks. We also, I didn't talk about it at all, but there's some bikeway projects related to safe routes. So thinking about how that impacts, because there's some things like bike boulevards are probably slower streets that would also impact how kids walk or bike to school. Um, and then the process to a man. We recommend, there's also some other best practices that we have less control over, two of which are, you know, really having school champions at schools to the, to work on some of the cultural things or think about how you know, walking school buses can really impact walking and biking rates to school, which um there's not a process for that really. And so it would have to be community advocate driven, site, school specific, that sort of thing. And then overall, just considerations about walking and biking before new schools are cited or boundary changes are made. We recognize that is a huge part of why we are able to have done and have success doing the work we've done is because they're our neighborhoods.
So when um the school district talks about boundary changes, I mean, do they meet with you? Do they talk with you? Did they?
Amy Miller in our division represents Planning and Development Services on School Boundary Change Committee. But um Ron May from USD four ninety seven, he was the operations. I mean, he has, he serves on our steering committee. So he has access to all of the tools we developed as part of these processes as information resource to him. To the extent they use that, I
Yeah, that's, I'm wondering what, how deep these conversations are when school boundaries are being
I have never been asked to participate, so I don't.
Okay.
You said earlier about some kids don't have bicycles. I see on TV every once in a while, some hero takes all the used bicycles, refurbishes them and ends them. Do we have anything like that in the Lawrence area?
We do. There's a local community nonprofit called Lawrence Unchained and they're a bicycle cooperative and they do repair bikes and do bike giveaways targeted particularly with housing authority last I knew. They also have an earn a bike program and um sell used bicycles that they repair to help do this for their nonprofit. I believe there's also some larger programs maybe related to Lions Club, but I'm not sure how those, I'm not, I'm not necessarily privy to that information.
And how do people find out about any of these, whether it's Lions Club or the
Well, I see a lot of posts often on face, Facebook type groups in community stuff, like people saying, oh, this kid needs a bike or and people responding like by whatever things, other than that, I don't know.
Okay.
It's kind of
Back to the school question, did, did I read in the paper that, I'm trying to think the there's a consultant maybe looking at school populations in terms of enrollment issues in the school district. And I'm wondering if that's a way to, meaning what in whatever that discussion is about which built, what to do with old buildings, what to do with existing buildings. I forget, I don't know exactly what that conversation is. Might that be a worthy conversation to have to bring in?
It could be. I mean, if they're doing some of that forecasting work, it just depends if they do it spatially. I mean, they have all the student information. So it's very possible that they could ask their consultant to work with us in terms of the model that we've built for sidewalks to be able to do some of that scenario modeling.
Changing school district boundaries just eats people up in in an instant. Talk about changing the school boundaries.
Okay, so as a result of that, you can see where all the routes are in gray, the gaps or projects are identified here and sidewalk projects. You can see we don't have too, too, too many left, but you can see there's probably some critical segments in some places. Some things we anticipate, um, you know, the nineteenth street, the this section of Baccarat Rusa with SL, you know, with SLT project. There's some things that will happen as part of development, other parts that um will need to be standalone projects.
So the gray that those are future projects to the
The gray on this one is the routes.
Oh, the route, okay.
The route. So like that's the, what was in yellow on the previous slide. Now it's just in gray because we want to show you how the connections are made.
Okay.
But now the um, the blue is if it's a gap on one side of a local street. The green is if it's on a collector or arterial, both sides. And then brown is if it's on a collector or arterial on one side of the street.
So I'm just thinking, so ninth street is just problematic, so.
So the prioritization methodology though has um some scoring that prioritizes different factors to to target um some of those projects. So thinking about transportation disadvantaged populations, we've now incorporated some of that equity consideration into waiting for that scoring. So to try to prioritize sidewalk gap infill for project selection where we believe there are populations that would most benefit from the need to walk or bike to school. Great. All of our planes are online at our website and then the um, that's the public health website that gets you to the link kind of of all the school pages. Um, and then content that public health maintains as a partner in safe routes.
Good job.
Much.
Thank you.
Good job. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this is the work that we do. So this is part of the Yes, thank you for your time.
They're usually at these meetings. What, what are we looking at for planning commission meetings this month? Two nights, one night?
This month, I believe we're looking at two nights. I don't have the bit of paper that's got that in front of me, but I remember I think tonight is two nights and
You thought that September was going to be heavy.
Yeah, I think it's stacked on both nights.
Yay.
So usually we always had the mid month and we got kind of a quick
Overview of what was coming.
What was, what was coming, so.
Yeah, we need to get back in the
Now that we're back at our first inference in mid month, maybe we can
Try to add that back in.
Yeah.
Thanks for that.
We need to get back in the routine. We've kind of lost it over the
Two and a half years.
Yeah, I think we got about two, two full nights if my memory serves correctly.
Yay, great. Thank you guys so much. Thank you, thank you.
We have other plans for the future. So if you have other stuff you would like to hear from us about, we are happy to come talk about any of the work that we have done. The other thing that most, maybe most relevant to you is the pedestrian plan. If you want to hear more about.
Always happy to talk about sidewalks. And David
Go off on rants or whatever.
I'm trying not to rant.
The meeting starts here at night. We need to clear the room before we do that. So I just want to ask, before we get job, is there anyone online that has any comments? Make before we go. That's without objection, we'll call this us close. Thanks, everyone. Thank you so, so much.